Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order the Board of Supervisors' special call meeting joint with Planning Commission. If everyone will stand for a pledge of allegiance.
Maybe if you have Gary call Planning Commission or just right back and back.
Oh, we thought that was identified. Go for it.
Yes, we did.
And I'd like to call to order the August 17th meeting of the Rappahannock County Planning Commission.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence.
You said we have an order that we ask that we all keep Mr. Woodson and his family in our thoughts and prayers going forward here.
Thank you.
That would be virtual.
Thank you, sir. All right.
Madam Chair, I would like to present or make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
It's motion for the board. I'll second the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Yes, I'll request a motion.
I am so moved.
Please. Do you adopt the agenda? I think you have a second.
Second.
In favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Donahue, I just held out on the board's agenda that the Planning Commission had some routine items to handle, which I believe on their agenda is adopt their minutes they can take care of.
All right. I believe, Phil, commissioners, you have a copy of the minutes. They were distributed. They're all available on board docs. I reviewed them and I do not have any comments.
I just have one correction. I think quest is guest in one of the second set of minutes. There's a typo which is a Q instead of a G.
So find quest and get guest.
Yes.
Anything else? Not added. Welcome a motion to approve the minutes. You can do both of them or one at a time if you prefer.
I move that we approve both sets of minutes.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
For the Planning Commission?
Well, since we're going back and forth, I guess our next step is a public hearing, but there are now and then a public comment. So what have you got next?
The review of the Berkeley Group. I think the public comment probably makes sense to go ahead and do that.
Sure. So we have no public hearings before us this evening, so it will be an open public comment for members of the public to hold time on anything of your course. Appreciate you keeping your comments and percreting to the point, but I'm not overwhelmed. So that I'll open the public comment period, Planning Commission, but I guess it's we're all here. So would anyone like to speak?
I don't have any. My name is Lisa Jones. I'm in Piedmont district, Sperryville, Virginia. And I just really want to say that I hope that you guys will have, this is a big deal as far as land application. It's probably the biggest deal that could affect the future of the county. And I just hope you guys will do everything you can to make sure you have it transparent, give examples of what the implications are for any changes you make, and have plenty of time for a public hearing. Very concerned about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Right on time. Mary Catherine Ishi, Piedmont. So thanks to the foresight and commitment of past leaders of our community, Rappahannock has arguably one of the strongest land protection schemes in the state, I think, as we all know. As we undertake possible revisions to our zoning and subdivision ordinances, we should keep a single principle squarely in front of us, which is don't negotiate down from our position of strength. This means not weakening provisions that protect our scenic and rural landscapes or our overall legal position for enforcing strict zoning limits. Having, like so many of us experienced over the course of my lifetime, the explosive growth in our jurisdictions to the east, I know it can take only a few bad land use decisions to weaken our protective position and lead to development that can be difficult or impossible to contain. Like most jurisdictions in the state, our ordinances are far from perfect. However, we should approach any potential rewrites in manageable chunks. That will allow for adequate understanding and review to ensure that any changes fully support the goals of our comprehensive plan, remembering the unequivocal statement in our comp plan by now familiar to so many of us, that we, the people of Rappahannock, declare it to be a scenic county, and our goals, principles, and policies will reflect and evolve from this fundamental recognition. The revision process, as others have said, should allow for full public input, including notice and opportunity for comment. Specifically, as I think you all know also, the Code of Virginia mandates that all zoning changes be first reviewed by the Planning Commission. That's one of the few strong mandates for the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission plays a very vital role in this process. Therefore, I would respectfully like to suggest a few things. I would hope that in this process, we are careful in the habit that the Planning Commission often has, rightfully so, of continuing meetings and doing a work session as part of a continued meeting. That's done for various purposes of convenience, and it's not usually a problem. But I think in something as important as these potential zoning changes, the problem with those continued meetings is they don't have notice to the public that it's going to happen in the same way that a full meeting does. And so I am aware, as folks have said, that it's noticed on board docs, of course, but I would suspect that, oh, I would know, 85, 90% of people in this county hardly know what board docs are. If you said, have you looked on board docs? They say, I've heard of that before somewhere. So it's not really the same kind of notice. And I know it's said, and I've had it said to me before, and rightly so, that not everybody reads the newspaper either, but I think a lot more people read the newspaper than go to look at board docs every day. So one possibility is to have scheduled work sessions every month so that people know to expect it coming up. That's another possibility. I'd also say in something as important as this, I know in past, under past administrators and in past years when various changes have been coming forth, that the county administrator would hold very informal work sessions, say, in the library, and members of the public could just kind of come and, you know, be part of the process. That may or may not be workable under current circumstances, but if not, maybe consider something such as enhanced public comment, such as maybe at the beginning of the meeting and then again at the end of the meeting, so that they can, people can comment on what you've been discussing during that process. I would also suggest that there's also, sometimes things are not posted to board docs that are going to be discussed until pretty close before the meeting because changes are being made. If things could be for this purpose posted, make a real effort to make sure they're posted to board docs a minimum of 48 hours in advance, that would be very helpful, I think. I think it's also important to bear in mind as we move forward that even in Virginia, localities are only required to plan for growth that's reasonably expected to occur in the future. We are not required to encourage development nor to incentivize it. On the other hand, we have the ability to incentivize land preservation in many instances, and that should be our goal. Most of us moved here and stay here because of the unique and stunning natural treasures offered by this county and because we knew we had a commitment to preserving those values and that also we had ordinance language to back it up. The importance of this is further emphasized by our status as one of the most visible gateway communities to the Shenandoah National Park, for whom we serve as a critical buffer for and contributed to those scenic recreational biodiversity values that have national importance. So I thank you very much for your commitment to helping steward this beautiful county we all come home in. Good luck.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Any one else for public comment? If not, please public comment section. Thank you very much.
I think we're back. Yes. Review of the Berkeley Group Land Use Policy Evaluation.
So I don't want to overstaff. I don't know if the, how you want to move through this process. If you'd like staff to try to lead discussion or chairs you would like to lead discussion?
I think what we had discussed was having kind of an open roundtable discussion in the very beginning and then trying to get a sense as to which direction both groups want to go, whole rewrite certain sections, how we want to do this, because for me and I think others, this is a very large undertaking, and I think it's, we've got to come up with the best way to do it for the citizens of this county.
Thank you. If I could just add, I believe when Chairman Donahue and I spoke about this, one of the key topics is, in addition to the sort of process and priority, what are the roles and responsibilities of the various parties in this? I mean, it is, as I look at this from the standpoint of the Planning Commission and recognizing, you know, some of the things we've dealt with that are much smaller than this, the idea of, you know, sufficient time and resources to do what we take on, I think is a key consideration. So, and I think clarity of, you know, roles and responsibilities is a key part of that. And I can imagine a few different scenarios. And from my perspective, I think from our discussion, just making sure we get to a common place, and I'm not sure if that comes before or after we decide what we're going to do. It seems to me that it's kind of a part and parcel of the overall plan, but those are my initial thoughts.
Let me say that Ms. Summers and I had a telephone conversation with Berkeley Group earlier, when was that, last week, lately? Time blends together. Thursday. And we discussed with them what their thoughts were on how we could move forward from the work that they already prepared and have shared with the Planning Commission and then the Board of Supervisors. And it turns out there are, you know, maybe an infinite number of ways that we can move forward, right? So we, by the time we got to that, into that conversation, we were discussing, well, what questions can be asked, answered, to help guide that discussion forward, which is the single piece of paper that passed around. Berkeley Group put that together for your consideration to try to help ask some of the questions that would help frame things. Some are procedural, like do these groups want to move forward together and work through processes together along the way, or are you interested in a sequential process, which is kind of the typical process where the Planning Commission reviews and considers changes and then passes them up to the board who reviews and considers what the Planning Commission put together, both needing public hearings. And the risk there is that the Planning Commission thinks you're right on point in either having such a meeting like this, but by the time it gets to the board, the board looks at it and says, what in the world were they thinking? That's not what we wanted to do. And then you have to start all over again. So there's benefits to being together, but it short circuits a little bit of the public input because it doesn't have those two stops along the way potentially. And you can do any number of hybrid ways to do this. The other big questions, and I don't need to go through in detail unless you want to, is how much public input do you want the Berkeley Group to help you with? Do you want to go out to the public and get a lot of feedback through community input on potentially changing portions of the zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance that have, I'll call them practical outputs? Or are you really focused right now on process procedure that wouldn't change necessarily what we've kind of known to understand to be our zoning ordinance? You can do this here and that there, and you can subdivide this parcel to that amount. If none of that changes, does that change your thought pattern on how much public input needs to happen and when? At the beginning of the process? At the end of the process? Both? So it really depends on what you want to do. We've talked about the fact that Berkeley Group has in other localities completely rewritten zoning ordinances from top to bottom. The new one doesn't resemble the old one. And also, they can assist us in piecemeal manageable chunks to change things around. So there really are a breadth of opportunities and pathways for us, and it's critical that while you're together, you really try to chew into what it is we want to achieve, where we want to end up, and maybe if we can come to some conclusion there, you can devise a pathway.
Could I ask a follow-up question? Was there any conversation about budget implications of these various choices? I know there was some discussion at our, at the previous Board of Supervisors meeting that funding was available, but it, I don't know that I've gotten much of a sense that, you know, the funding that was available was perceived to be available for, you know, which of those mix of options? Can you say anything about that?
Right. So over the last, over the last year FY '22 ended June 30th and then into FY '23, the board has budgeted $20,000 on an annual basis to provide resources to the Planning Commission and this sort of process to get things done. In addition to that, for FY '23, the board appropriated $50,000 to, one-time money, not expected to repeat year over year over year, to enhance your ability to do things. So in the current fiscal year, I have $70,000 to do things. From our conversation with the Berkeley Group, that's not going to rewrite the entire zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance with public input, the whole process, everything. It wouldn't do that. But that process would take a couple of years with facilitated public discussion and facilitate a process with the Planning Commission over multiple, multiple meetings to go through that. So it might be that the amount of money that the board has provided for right now is enough if that is a function of what you want to accomplish. Although I would, well, I'd like to hold on to our dollars and spend them only for the right thing, as we get to usually do it once. This is a pretty important topic for the community, and if these two bodies can come together on the endpoint, then I think the investment from the board, and they can speak for themselves, they'll find a way to get us to that endpoint with the proper investment.
You know, one of the questions I had, which goes to what kind of process we might want, is on their next deck recommendations, the first they have is amending the zoning ordinance comprehensively to ensure compliance with the Code of Virginia, enhance clarity, usability, and reflect best practices. I'm just wondering, how much of a substantive change would that, would ensue? I mean, what makes me nervous is, is having the Berkeley Group change the substance of the ordinance as opposed to changing the order, the clarity, and usability. I mean, that seems to me, and certainly having it comply with the Code of Virginia. I also think it's useful to have it comply with the comprehensive plan. So those seem to me really clear goals that would not, I don't think would affect the actual substance of the ordinance or the intent of the ordinances.
You don't need to talk through an interpreter. No, I was just saying that the one example that comes to mind is the political signs, Virginia's code section.
Yeah.
And our political science section, the two.
No, no question about that.
So that would be a substantive realignment, which I think is reflected in the draft ordinance that staff prepared for the board that was then sent back down.
Right, 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 right. I see. Yeah, okay.
Outside of something like that, I don't think our code is drastically out of whack with the Code of Virginia.
Yeah, I would think so.
Yeah, there are a few things here and there. A lot of things that we might choose not to do and some things that are required relative to cash proffers and things like that, that just really aren't going to be in our wheelhouse. So it's not a big deal that they've been missing, but they probably should be represented.
Yeah, okay.
When we talked to the Berkeley Group team, they said that they've gone through this process a couple of times with different localities and in some cases did a lot of public input upfront, in other cases didn't, but then the public came back later and said, wait a minute, how come we weren't part of this, part of this development of this document? And thought that they were left out. And when we kind of explored that, we came to a conclusion that if you go into it with the expectation that public input is going to be maybe pushed more towards the back end because you're going to focus on procedural items but might uncover substantive items, then you would be kind of ticking off all these particular items that you need to get public input on. Then you can push those particular items out to the public at some point in time in the future, after you've kind of rearranged everything to make it flow the way you think you want it to flow, really pull information from the public on that and anything else that they, you know, want to bring forward at that time. And they said that it's probably not a good idea to try to do that without that plan upfront based on their past experience in the other locality.
I would agree with that.
Could I make a comment on that?
Sure.
And I don't mean to, others to certainly speak, but my experience both within here in working with comprehensive plan and in my professional life, which for a long period had dealt with entirely public involvement, my, I feel like when you just go out and ask people what they think, they may have nothing to say. You propose doing something and you're going to hear from mostly people who don't like what you propose doing. So if you really want to get public engagement, I think laying out some options that would, you know, kind of reflect the range of possibilities would be the way to get the most robust public involvement if that were the mode that we chose to take. You know, I'm not sure I could suggest what, I wouldn't speculate much about what the shortest path to success is, but I would just offer those observations from past experience.
Well, I think, excuse me, I think that what Ms. Ritter said, I totally agree with, that what I got out of this was that there are some clerical bits of housekeeping that we can do on a structural and compliance end that are going to take a lot of work.
Yeah.
Because it's going to require us to go through the whole ordinance without necessarily adjusting anything and just cleaning that stuff up. In terms of substantive issues, I mean, I can just say for myself, I'm not interested in doing anything that would downzone us or, you know, sort of weaken what we currently have in place. I think between the definitions, the telecommunications, pulling out the renewable energy section and basically breaking it out so it's more defensible, and having a look at the use matrix table, that's a lot of work. That's a ton of work. And to me, those are sort of structural administrative things that we can do that will inevitably lead to, as Mr. Goff was pointing out, things that might end up substantively changing something. So the Berkeley Group, when they presented this to us, there were substantive changes in what they suggested.
Yeah.
And I don't think I've said this publicly yet, but I'm not interested in those parts of it for Rappahannock, at least right now. So that's kind of where I'm, I think I'm coming from. And I think that coming up with a plan of how we want to do that so that we can include, as Ms. Smith brought up at the last meeting, as much public comment and interaction as possible in the right way, so that, as Mr. Light just pointed out, it's not, it's not at the beginning when nobody has anything to comment on.
Yeah.
It's at those critical times when there is stuff to comment on. So that we can get a really clear direction from the public in that sense.
Well, just as a follow-up to your list, I, it might be useful to have the subdivision ordinance edited and incorporated into the zoning ordinance, just for user, I mean, unless you, you know, I always wonder whether it was written this way because they didn't want it to be easily understood.
It's not typical for subdivision ordinance to be within the zoning ordinance, and I, I've kind of wrestled with this over the last couple of months as I always recommended. I don't know that, I don't know that I like that idea.
Okay.
Partially because of the built-in appeal process for zoning matters close to the BCA, Ms. BCA representative. But subdivision appeal type things go to the governing body. And I think that can get very confusing if it's all wrapped into one chapter. I think they must speak together.
Yeah.
And nest together, but for all practical purposes, we don't do subdivisions. I mean, compared to other localities. And we can strengthen what it is that we have codified right now, probably, which basically says that if you want to break up a big parcel into something bigger than 50 acres, it's not a subdivision. It's just, go do it. It's allowed. If you want to move lines around and not create new lots, a boundary line adjustment, we basically exempt it from the subdivision ordinance. That's not a great plan. Probably should be codified and defined what it is. And then we provide administrative control for very small subdivisions, and then everything else goes through the Planning Commission. I don't know how often that's been done over the many years, but we haven't seen one since January 1, 2018, since I've joined the board and the county.
Well, I guess, you know, in terms, however, you, you know, a subdivision could be five-acre lots.
Absolutely.
And there, you know, there are places in this county where that's absolutely permissible.
Yeah, and that's the tricky part of, you have a comprehensive plan, you have a zoning map, and you basically have told the world that you want that to happen, right? You've zoned a property five acre, or five, and your comprehensive plan supports the zoning. And if somebody comes in and meets your subdivision requirements, you have to approve that. It's ministerial. You have to approve it.
Well, so maybe one of the things we need to do is to look at those subdivision requirements.
Yeah, sure. You know, what, but that's, that's more of what you need to show on a, on a plat, or what type of road do you need, does it need to meet VDOT standards and all of those things. Those are the things that you definitely need to get straight in your subdivision ordinance if they aren't crystal clear now.
Yeah.
And then if somebody does want to go all in and take a thousand-acre parcel and chop it into a whole bunch of five-acre lots, not that that exists, then they have to handle the roads and the water and the sewer to meet the subdivision ordinance. But if they meet those requirements, it's not a popularity thing. It's they've met the requirements.
And we talked about, and I put on my list, fixing road standards.
Yeah.
And like your type-two subdivision road standard is, needs to be fixed. Not workable. Those are the sort of things that, it's better to rely on VDOT standards, even if it's going to be a private road. If you're going to allow a road to service multiple lots and be private, that's fine. Just make them meet VDOT standards, whether it's taken into the public system or not. In that case, chances are if they build it to public VDOT standards, they're going to want it taken into the VDOT system because they won't have to maintain it then. But that would make the project more expensive, but it would make it more sustainable. So it's less likely to happen, but if it does happen, it's more sustainable.
sustainable. Those are sort of, those are, you know, things that, that will be uncovered if you start digging through the subdivision ordinance. I made my own short list of items that, happy to share with, with members if you ever want it, but things that we've seen along the way, and then things that I picked up after reading this report, you know, for a second or third time.
In terms of scope, since the Berkeley Group has given us this, you are getting help in an assistant county administrator. And the question is, is what kind of scope do we need to have to determine whether we can have money for Berkeley Group, and what do you think is the correct balance between staff and the Berkeley Group? And I know that depends on scope, but.
Yeah. So I was a consultant once, and I can tell you that you don't just want to hand the project to the consultant and say, you know, go, please, go do this work and come back to me when you're done. That's definitely not the right answer. There needs to be a blend. But I can, and I can tell you that my experience is with big projects like this, whether it's here, or private, or anywhere else, it needs a champion, it needs a push for the comp plan, for sign ordinance. If staff isn't pushing hard to get those things done, they slow down. And so we need to be positioned to really be, we want to do this, we're going to have to do it and push. And as you notice, noted, we will be bringing in extra staff capacity, which will allow me to focus more of my attention on zoning, building, all that stuff.
So I guess from this group, we really need to make the decision, how big of a bite do we want to take out of the, the apple? And complying with the Code of Virginia seems to me that that's just something we're going to do. Some parts of it is more important than, than others, but still needs to be brought up to speed. The clarifying the language, I think, from what the board has said, at least, given citizen feedback on going into the zoning office or building office or whatever, some sort of clarity that someone can go online and have a really good idea of what they're going to need when they walk in the door for a particular. And that, to me, is something that I'm not sure the Berkeley Group really needs to clarify the language. We've got staff that know what the citizens need to bring in. We just need to make it in a matrix that's obvious and consistent, because I think that's what we hear as well, that depending on who walks in the door, they get a different answer. Not saying that that's a true statement or not, but we need to make it very clear online somehow for the citizens to be able to figure out if they're going to need a permit, not need a permit, how much it's going to cost, do they need a plat, do they not need, you know, that kind of information.
There's so many permutations. It, it is very complicated, which is why you really need a human to decipher a lot of what's happening there. But I don't disagree that some of that belongs in your ordinance, some of that belongs in guidance that will parallel your ordinance, some of it's in the forms that link up with the ordinance to help, which are referenced in the, the documents, to help pull in the information that you need so an applicant can meet the requirements of the ordinance. If the ordinance says you have to do A, B, C, and D, we ought to have a form that asks for A, B, C, and D, or data to support that. And we've made big changes to those forms over the last several years to try to, to be moving in that direction, so that if somebody completely fills out a form, they've provided everything they need to, for you to make decisions that you need to make, or administratively decisions to be, to be made. But there's always improvement in that area.
Well, one of the other issues that I think keeps coming up is in the definitions of the ordinance. And a lot of them are outdated, irrelevant, some of them confusing. That, is that something that you want the Planning Commission to work on, or is that something that is better done by?
Well, the board has tasked Mr. Goff and I to go through the use table and provide back. And those definitions are linked to the use table.
Right.
And Ms. Summers has already gone through the definitions and matched them up with the use table, you know, where they kind of do this.
Yeah.
In some places, sometimes they, they line up. Other places, different words, or they don't exist, or there's a definition for something that's not even in the use table. So that is a, that's really the heart of the zoning ordinance.
Could either one of y'all give me specifics?
Um.
Did you put down this?
No, I didn't read it.
I did.
Anything else?
Maybe.
So, we've got, for example, heavy industrial use, there's no definition. Industrial uses other than heavy, no definition, petroleum project, product. Bulk storage and distribution, seems obvious, no definition. Warehousing, moving and storage, no definition.
If I could, if there's, if those uses are not allowed, then there wouldn't need to necessarily be a, a definition of those uses.
Laundry, dry cleaner, laundromat, furniture repair, barber's beauty shop, carpentry, plumbing, electrical, printing, sheet, sheet metal shop.
They need definitions?
Auction establishment, motor vehicle impoundment yard.
We, we don't have one, so why would we need a definition? But why would we need a definition for a carpentry shop or electrical shop?
Well, sir, you don't have to have definition. And if the, if the bodies collectively don't want to have definitions, you certainly don't have to. But that is a staff recommendation. When it comes time to interpret the ordinance, when an application comes in and somebody says, all I want to do is have a building that, that does this thing, then, then Michelle has got to figure out, is that a use provided for in the ordinance? And she's got to go through presumably the definitions to see if it's a use provided.
Those aren't uses that are listed as home occupation, so they would only be listed in commercial districts. So if they're already allowed in a commercial district, why wouldn't just a mention of them be enough? They're not, they're not home occupations.
Well, it could be home occupation, but it could be a business.
How to look at the definition of home occupation?
But, um, there's.
Home occupation was already defined, unless somebody slipped something in when I wasn't looking.
Once, well, I don't know if there's a definition in the definitions, but there's a whole section, 170-71, that talks about home occupations.
Right. But it doesn't.
I believe it doesn't list those type of trade things. I didn't, I'm sorry.
So if it's not listed, it was already covered that it wasn't allowed as a home occupation, then it would fall under small contractor's yard.
There is, there is a use and a definition for a small contracting yard as part of a residence, which is different than a contractor's yard.
But those things are defined as somebody that does X, Y, or Z. So those, those are already taken care of. I, I think we're, we're, we're really spinning our wheels and wasting a lot of time even talking about something I think that's already been covered. We've been working with it for 40 years.
As I said, absolutely do not have to change your definitions. You don't have to change your use matrix at all. Now, a staff recommendation is that you do sync up the use matrix with your definitions, and make sure they're in categories and, and are descriptible and definable. But if you don't want to do that, we don't have to do that. And it has been working for a long time. So if we're satisfied with what we have, and the risks, as little as they are going forward, then you don't have to change it. We don't have to change anything at all in the whole ordinance.
No, I think now you're, maybe you're trying to belittle my comments, it looks like, but that's not what I'm saying. The things that we have to change, we ought to change. The things that we need to work on, we should be working on. But if we spend a lot of time talking about things, I believe, that are not really germane to what we really need to do, then we're going to, we'll have a three-hour conversation about what is a sign, or what is a horseshoe? Why do they call it a horseshoe? Well, that, that has nothing to do with the Planning Commission, but we could get hung up on that if we want to.
Well, that's why we're here tonight. So we're, staff is ready to receive direction from the board and the Planning Commission on how to move forward, how we engage Berkeley Group, if we engage the Berkeley Group.
Can I ask Mr. Fraser a follow-up? Was, it sounded like you're starting, you started that comment with something that I want to just go back to, because I thought I was hearing you say, why would we define things we don't allow if the point is to define the things we allow? If it's not in the definition of things we allow, that we don't need to define all the things we don't allow? Was that part of your point?
That may be kind of convoluted what I was trying to say. But yeah, if, if we don't allow it, why would we define it?
Why would we define it, as long as we have a comprehensive set of definitions for those things that we allow?
Right.
You certainly don't need both, right? Everything defined that you allow, and everything defined that you don't allow.
Yeah, that is, is just a waste of our, our time and effort, I think. So, I mean, that's, that's just my feelings on it.
Mr. Fraser, for my benefit, can, are, are ones that you enumerated, those are not allowed even with a permit?
Those are all allowed.
With a permit, but they have.
Some of them, some are permitted.
But they don't.
And they don't have definitions.
Right. So, Mr. Fraser, what is, so these are permitted uses which don't have definitions, and you're suggesting we don't need definitions for them, or shouldn't?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
Things, things that are allowed, we certainly should have definitions, but I don't think, I mean, it should be self-explanatory what a carpenter shop is.
Well, I don't know if I agree with that necessarily, because that could mean a whole lot of different things.
Why?
That's good.
I mean, you wouldn't be doing much welding work.
I mean, carpenters now deal with all kinds of different materials. Anyway, I'm just trying to get to, I'm just trying to understand what you're pointing.
Those, those uses weren't allowed under home occupations generally.
Right. But they're allowed with like an SE, but they're not defined.
Or, or they may be allowed by writing, commercial.
Oh, sure. But they're not defined. And, and it would seem to me to be pretty pertinent to define them.
I, I think the risk is, if you don't define them, then someone will come in and say, no, this is a carpenter shop.
Yeah.
Take my word for it, and what they're doing wouldn't meet.
But we don't have to recreate the wheel. Generally speaking, Fairfax and Loudon and Henrico, they have spent the money to create the wheel. It's not copyrighted work. We can just get those definitions. If we agree with them, we use them.
That's a better one.
That's, that's, well, that's what the ordinance is right now. It's a Falkir ordinance that was probably a Fairfax ordinance. All they did in 1984, when they started the process, was they ripped a few pages out, they beefed up the, the density requirement, and that's what they approved in 1986, was the Falkir ordinance that, that had a few pages ripped out of it.
Yeah, but Falkir ordinance since then has been.
Well, but we're not Falkir.
I know.
But we can use anybody's definitions as long as we agree with them. We don't have to do that work.
It'd be a quick way to get some definitions, for sure.
Yeah.
If we agree with it. Good idea.
Well, yeah, yeah, as long as they, are, you know, we've got them defined in the use table like where it says. Just as an example, we'll take laundry, dry cleaner, laundromat, and it's permitted in CV and CG, and it's permitted in industrial and highway commercial. And yet we don't know what the difference between a laundry, dry cleaner, slash laundromat really is, other than to apply a dictionary definition. So it would seem that, that since we have it there, maybe there is, like, you know, in, in RICO's code, there's something that exactly meshes with those words. But I think that if we're going to leave the, the use table as it is, it certainly is going to be of a great benefit to the applicant and the enforcement agency to know exactly what that entails. So I agree, there, there's a lot of stuff in here that, that's not allowed. And yet it's, you know, there's no definition for it. But where there is a permitted type of application, especially since you need a zoning permit no matter what, it would be helpful to say that, what, what a laundry, dry cleaner's laundromat actually is, by our, you know, our own definition. And certainly you can look to another code, and kind of maybe, there might be two or three definitions out there in, in a code, in different localities' codes that we can pull in and say, well, here you go. Here's three examples of what it might be. And then usually the decision-makers say, well, we vote, this is what it ought to be in Rappahannock County.
That might be key, keyed on scale. A laundromat that has a couple of machines might be okay for Rappahannock, but one that has 50 or a commercial facility that brings in laundry from another town may not be good for Rappahannock.
Yeah, horse blanket capital of the world.
But we.
So, it's a good business, isn't it?
Well, yeah.
You got to talk. But, yeah, that's the kind of thing you, you know, that as part of a definition could limit the scope of the actual extent of the use.
So to be clear, if the zoning administrator interprets the ordinance, the definition of one of these uses to be a certain thing, and the applicant doesn't like it, nobody sitting at this table, save Ms. Ritter, will get to be involved with the next step. And so do you want to reserve for yourself the words in the ordinance to mean what you want it to mean, or do you want the BZA and then the courts to do it?
Well, getting back to laundromat and dry cleaning, I think it's pretty, it's, it's pretty well-known what those uses are. We probably would, would limit the size or the scope of it. They clean laundry.
Especially when it's permitted in some zones. So, you know, like I said, she, she faces an application where there's 50 units in a laundromat, with a huge amount of, of water usage and discharge, and a lot of what was, God, where's, where's Mr. Man over there with the?
Septic.
Yeah, the septic stuff, you know, all the fats that are discharged in the form of the soap.
Bob.
Yes, that's oil grease. And so does Rappahannock County, I mean, it wouldn't have to be an opportunity to say, well, wait a minute, you know, where's that going to be in highway commercial? And shouldn't she have the guidance of the governing body to say, well, I'm sorry, I have to turn down your permit, but we only allow 20 machines? That's a policy decision that the governing body needs to make, so that we can rationally enforce things. Part of the problem is rational enforcement. If we don't have a set of rules, we can't expect anybody to follow.
Right. Well, while you're on that subject, I don't think the number of machines is the issue. It's the amount of water usage, whether, I mean, if you have 10 machines and they're open 24 hours a day.
That's the kind of decision that we're asking you to make.
They have the, the potential to use more water than 20 machines that's only open eight hours a day.
That's why we need to have this discussion about definitions first, which we're going to rework the, the zoning ordinance in a meaningful way, that actually removes, you know, as the bureaucrats in Washington DC, ops, you know, SU obfuscation, right? That's the, that's the bureaucratic phrase. If we're going to take away any sort of unclarity, then that's the first step. So it's been our staff's idea that we kind of, that we come to you with a big Thanksgiving planner, and say to you, hey, here's the things we've identified that really do need a definition for purposes of clarity and enforcement. Not only, it's not, it's the both ends of it, right? It's the applicant's benefit, so they know what they can do in Rappahannock County. Anybody in the world can look at our ordinance and say, you can't have 10 machines that are open 24 hours a day in Rappahannock County, so let's go to Culpeper. And, which is definitely what we want, right? So, and, and what she needs to, when she says no, she's got to have a law to point to and say, no, I can't allow it. She's, and then they're going to come back to her and say, it is a laundromat. See, it's got machines, and you put coins in them. But there are 50 of them. Well, no, we're not, and she can't just arbitrarily say no to that.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to, to pull the strings out of watching abortion machines. I mean, I understand it. But let's take an example of something that could be more radical. Let's say somebody came in for crematory. Okay? So you're going to put a crematory into animals, okay? But then all of a sudden, they're starting to do protein creation, where they bring in truckloads of bacon and turn it into protein. So do you have an animal rendering factory there, or do you have something like crematory, reduce an animal or something like that? These definitions in cases like that is where you've got to be really careful. You have to have clear definitions on whether it's an animal rendering factory, where you're, it might be small, or it's really a crematory, where you've got to do somebody's pets, or do a case of horse that belongs to somebody, things like that. But some of these things, you know, it's a question of where, whether or not it's permitted or not.
And, and all of these uses, they all come down to, and I think Berkeley Group said it the other day, scope and scale. If you can define scope and scale, what you think is acceptable for our community, then you can then apply regulations for it, use standards for it. You know, you can have this scope and scales only if you are on a lot of certain size, or only if you are so far away from a property line, or only if you're on a primary highway. You can then apply all those other requirements to that use, if you can define the scope and scale of that use.
Well, and that brings to mind, you know, when I, when I'm out of the county and driving down redways all the time now, I see yard signs about data centers. And I, I don't think we have anything that deals with them in our ordinance. And certainly, it's, it's coming to every county around us, and we should be paying careful attention to what they have or are preparing.
Can't come here now, because we don't allow it. It's, there's no, there's no Can't come here now because we don't allow it. It's, there's no, there's no data, there's no data center category. So, if it's not in this list, you can't do it in Rappahannock County.
Unless, unless somebody tried to turn the words to suggest data center fit in the definition of something else.
Home occupation.
That we didn't want, that we don't have a definition.
That's what you always have to worry about. I mean, they're, they're big business with a lot of big, big dollars and, uh, robust legal representation for warranties for all.
Absolutely. Which is why I mentioned earlier that pulling out, when they suggested pulling out the renewable energy category and separating them out so they're more defensible, I think is a good idea. Because solar, I would put in that category as well.
Well, and I, I had misgivings, as you all know, about the solar ordinance because there was not mapping of what we actually approved. And it's one thing I, I would be glad that we would revisit and make sure it is where we want it to be.
Absolutely.
So, what's the best way to move forward? Because we've all got keywords, um, cluster development that set off alarms in, I think, just about everybody's head in one way or another. Would it make sense for all of us to document the words that we're most concerned about, data centers? Submit them to, um, Planning Commission and Mr. Curry to kind of have a start of the words that really people are concerned could happen here? And tackle what we know's a problem, what we think is coming is a problem, and at least we can feel good about getting that work done.
Let's just back up here. I think we started at the beginning. Do we want to make this document user-friendly, from a general agreement? Do we want to make it user-friendly for the citizens, the applicants and the staff? I mean, do we, do we want to do that?
That's a real question, right?
It is.
Nobody can figure it out, then they can't do anything.
Yeah, then you go get Johnson, who'll figure it out.
Right, that's right, the lawyers will figure it out.
Was that a strategy?
I don't think so.
No.
Only if it wasn't Fairfax.
It certainly was effective, though.
No, I agree. I, I, yeah, what does that look like? You know, it's like, the question is, is, is part of that user friendly, friendliness, what the Berkeley Group suggested, which is taking the subdivision ordinance and putting it inside the zoning ordinance and then cleaning up the use matrix and yada, yada, yada? Or leaving them separate, as Mr. Curry said we could do? I think that the use matrix, just cleaning that up would be a big start.
Yeah.
And then defining everything.
I don't, I don't understand the rationale behind combining the zoning and subdivision ordinance.
Yeah, you, I think you missed that conversation earlier. I agree with you. I think there, uh, there are some issues with that. And as long as the two documents are very carefully nested together, right now we have a situation where there are literally duplicated provisions in each which make no sense.
And don't exactly match.
And some, we've talked about the family divisions. There was an ordinance change for one and it didn't change for the other.
Right.
And so, it's always, you know, when we're doing engineering specifications, you say it once and you say it right, period. You don't, you don't say it three times in the zoning ordinance and three times in the subdivision ordinance and it's six different versions that somebody's got to interpret.
Well, since the family division, it should have only been in the subdivision ordinance. It had no place in the zoning.
Hundred percent agree.
Yeah. And now, the code of Virginia says we have to have a subdivision ordinance. We don't have to have a zoning ordinance. By implication, the code treats them as two separate things.
Right.
They, they rightfully, and just my humble legal opinion, John Foote might disagree with me, but I don't think so. The, the two should probably be separated. Uh, and really the stuff that's all jumped into our zoning ordinance, we, we go through there and go, what are we supposed to do with this? And so, that needs cleaning up. So, what I guess staff is asking is clear direction, clean up these definitions, clean up the, the merc, what I call the merc. You know, there's like creatures from the Black Lagoon sort of floating around all throughout both of, of these things. And we've identified them. And I think that we can, like I said, come with a Thanksgiving platter and say, here it is. Then, then, then the decision-making bodies can say, okay, here's what they say needs fixing. Then you decide what needs fixing first, if at all, and go down through the, the list. And so, I mean, I, I can only, that's the only workable way I can think to make it work is somebody's got to identify where the, the problem is. You know, somebody's got to do an X-ray and find out where the bones broke.
Sure. What would you suggest then? I, I guess I'm having a hard time dividing what, what responsibility staff wants to retain versus what work we would like to farm out to the Berkeley Group? And where the interaction with the planning commission and board of supervisors and public is. I mean, I think that's sort of the matrix we need to look at. And, and if I may just say, I think our premise has always been that we know when we hire a group like the Berkeley Group, we are trading y'all's time for some money and perhaps efficiency because it is someone that only is tasked with that and can concentrate on that. So, I do feel like it may be worth your time and our money to, to farm more of this work out than we currently anticipate to get it done. But that leads to the bigger question of what's the work, if we all agree that we should do a big lift and that we should work together, what does that work plan look like and the timetable and how do we approach it? And, you know, there's multiple layers here.
Yeah, I, I agree and, and Michelle and I spoke with them a little bit about that relationship. And, um, I think I broke it down ultimately that I would like to have them as basically extended staff resources, if available, where these bodies identify what we want to do. And then we can get that done with the assistance of the, of our higher hitters over here to help us get through the, the bulk of it and get it back to you. So, it's, you know, kind of passing through us to our reserve team and back out to, to the bodies. I think that would work well and they suggested they'd be okay working as long as we could work together, they would be fine. We can define the pieces of scope for them so they understand what they're charged with doing and we understand what we're going to get charged for, uh, them doing and we can move that forward piece by piece. I think as, you know, Art said, the merc, et cetera, but the process and the application processes and the defensibility of those processes, those are all things that I think that as we pass through, they're going to pull from the benefit of their best practice wisdom from other places and help say, well, this is how your ordinance lays this process out, but here's three other versions of how other people lay out that process. Uh, and then we can bring back to you an option or two options and, and you can say, well, that's clear and obvious and most protective of when you make a decision, the end of a special exception, that it's, that it's going to be defensible and it's going to stick.
Well, as long as they can keep in mind that we're kind of unique in the things that we don't have as far as infrastructure. I mean, back to that laundromat and dry cleaning, the only place that has water and sewer that something like that should be at is right here in this town.
Right.
So, I mean.
But there was one in Sperryville before.
But, but, but you have to use groundwater, so you're pulling a lot of groundwater out for the washers.
Yeah, and so those sort of, that Venn diagram of, of uses that we allow, where they're appropriate and maybe where they exist, if we actually look through those lenses and see where they overlap, you might find that the ordinance right now has, in the use table allows it in all these different zoning districts that don't make any sense whatsoever. Now, when Art and I started our, met already with Michelle to talk about the use table, we were very hesitant to change or eliminate or downzone or anywhere, definitely not upzone, right? Uh, but if they said SP for, and just example, laundromat in agriculture, we were really reticent to say, well, we should insert our judgment here and the board's not going to want to do that. That's, that will ultimately fall to you to consider those things rather than staff saying that. But I, we might put a big highlight around it saying, well, you really want to look at this one.
Right, if you could call them out. The one that comes to mind is inconsistency, um, at the Vedets, uh, location in Sperryville a few years ago.
Sure.
Where, where wineries were permitted by right, but breweries require a special exception.
A restaurant, it's, uh, it's highway commercial, so you can do a restaurant, but you can't do a brewery.
Right.
You can't do a professional office, even though there are plenty of professional offices up that road. You can't do it.
Yep.
Uh, well, and also Main Street in Sperryville.
They came in after the.
Residential is not a by right.
It's legal.
And we've, you know, we heard Mr. Atkins at the last meeting say, you know, he can remember when there's families up and down that road and, you know, as a community. Well, you've zoned it out. Is that what you want? And so, those are the deeper looks into that use table that will come up later that you need to consider. We've already said, we don't want to make those changes, but we can highlight some of those potential items that you want to focus on.
That's what we really need help with and just as a good example, just looking at commercial retail business, which is a really important category. It says office professional, uh, including a clinic, three persons or fewer employed. And that's actually, and, and they're, that's actually defined and that's really helpful because it tells us what the scope is. But you look right above it. You look at farm supply establishment. It's permitted in a couple of zones. Well, you know, is it an 84 lumberyard that we're talking about there or what? So, that's your job as a planning commissioner, recommending my client, the board, what, how that ought to be fleshed out? How it ought to be limited because it's got to be appropriate to the zones that it's allowed in. And right now, you've got a special exception and ad for that. What, and if you're going to defend that in court, you're going to have to have some pre-existing standards. You can't just arbitrarily decide, you know, oh, that's just too big, you know, well, that's, you know, I don't like that. It's got to be, there's got to be some kind of objective standard by which an applicant's informed ahead of time, you know, what he needs to comply with in order to get his wish in a, in a mother may I, special exception ad. But then you look over in CB and CG and highway commercial, well, it's permitted. And so, if there's a lot big enough, man, they can have a giant farm supply establishment, you know, tractor supply on steroids. That's, that's a policy decision that we're asking you to make. We can't really enforce it. Doesn't make us, it doesn't make us effective. We need to be effective as an entire governing body. And the only way to do that is if we have, you know, a fleshed out set of rules where you've had public input and, and you ask the people, do you want farm supply stores to be, you know, greater than half an acre in size? So, you need to kind of put that out there, like, you know, get the feedback and then make a decision based on your sound judgments, not ours. We don't want to make those choices. We just want to implement them what you do.
Okay, so they're going back to that, those, those issues relate to what's the definition, right? I mean, how does it fit into the matrix? So, the question then is, who's going to sort out what needs to be defined and how this matrix should work? And do you want the Berkeley Group to have a first stab at that? And then look at what they do or, I mean, for you guys to do.
So, I think staff is, we're already working on that, uh, the use table, the definition through extension. And the other extension are the, those, um, the use, the, the special requirements, right? The use regulations, right? Which we have now in Article Six for the special uses. Some uses that are SP and SE have them, some don't have any at all. Anywhere we can define those, as Art was just saying, that's important because those are clear lines that if the applicant can't cross that line or can't meet that threshold, they're out. Now, there are also clear lines the other way, which if they meet all 15 of those standards, it makes it very difficult for the board. But we've heard from the courts before, they don't like subjectivity in that area.
No, that's, that, that's not how you regulate people's property rights in the United States.
So, I guess if, um, try to pull things all together. I, I'm hearing generally that if we can define what the bodies think are acceptable, and the bodies as input from the public, acceptable uses, largely what we have now may be cleaned up and more clearly defined, then, um, any tweaks from that really need robust public input and dialogue from the bodies. The ease of use, which was talked about, I think I'm hearing that generally if we can get that other part right, then the ease of use should, should go along with it. It should be easy to find out you can or cannot do something. Right, and it should be easy to find out if you can do something, you have to do it in a particular way or only in certain circumstances. So, I think that ease of use, that's where staff is bolstered by the Berkeley Group can really work on the ordinance to move things around, clean up the murkiness. Uh, and then for the use table, the definitions, staff with the, the bullpen can work on that as well. And where there are those highlighted areas that, boy, this is really subjective, needs to go back through the public process.
And what about compliance with the code of Virginia? Do you want them to run through that?
Yeah, I think those are sprinkled in and they did a great job in the report. If you go to the back.
Yeah.
And I read through all of those. Most of them are not big deals. They're just need to filter in. They also made a recommendation in our zoning ordinance as we go through. If we can reference state code in our ordinance.
Yeah.
That makes it better in court, better for us. Um, as we're reading our ordinance, we're like, why in the world is that there? And you got the cross-reference in our ordinance to go right over and say, oh, we have to have it there.
Yep.
So, what, this sounds like consensus around, um, starting with the use table and the associated definitions. But I guess I wanted to pull out one thread on this because there is a separate definitions that not all definitions are in the use table and not all things in the use table are in the definitions. Are, are we pivoting and on the use table? Because it also seems to me we have things, we have too many things defined in the definition section. Because I think there's a lot of things that are defined and you wonder why are they defined if they're not used anywhere? Is that part of what you see? I think there are cross-referenced and you brought up a point. The, um, 170 dash 45 in your zoning ordinance is your floodplain ordinance. It has its own definitions. The board just, in the planning commission just did that, you know, last year, two years ago. So, that's, that little bucket's fine. And then in the sign ordinance, you know, it's got its own definitions and the planning commission is chewing through that. And I think that'll be a separate piece that, that after the planning commission's done with that, probably a good idea to have the Berkeley Group give it a once-over for their wisdom. But I agree, it's, it's two ways. It's the. But you are proposing both ways. Yes, and the Berkeley Group suggested incorporating some definitions into our zoning ordinance that are standard state definitions. Even though they're already in the state code, probably is user-friendly to have them in your local ordinance as well. So, is the, is, is what you are doing actually just going ahead and working on that or are you preparing a list of these things? What, I, I guess I'm curious, as I'm thinking about the path forward. What is your next work progress? So, that's where we really need to know how long our leash is. Well, I'm wondering if the Thanksgiving platter was a reference to the scale or the timing.
Yeah. Scale, scale, scale.
Good point.
Yeah, it is, it is function of timing and Berkeley Group has told us, um, they would love to work with us. They are very full of work for the fall. So, if we could, if we could, well, that's going to be our work to get the menu worked out. And then when, uh, then you start picking that à la carte menu, then we can go back and really task them. But Berkeley Group said they will put us on their schedule so that we don't get pushed further out. And then is your vision, just to sort of play this out a little bit with respect to tapping that, um, you know, extended staff resources, is your notion that you would do that on kind of a time cycle, like a quarterly basis? Or just whenever something comes up, add to the scope? No, there's, there have to be structure. If we want to drive this forward, we'd have to have some much more defined structure. Like time, time-based structure. Yeah, and probably sectional or something. I didn't necessarily come in tonight with a preconceived notion of what would happen. I was just trying to read the room here. Yeah, well, I was just curious how for your, you obviously have something of a vision. I was just trying to see how for it extended. I want to read all your minds and then put that together and feed it back to you so we can get a quick and easy.
I'd not be able to sleep.
We, uh, do a process here that's going to carry us for 10 years?
Well, I would hope, well, '86, how about let's go for longer than 10 years? Yeah.
Yep.
Well, I think one thing this discussion has already revealed is how quickly things come up.
Oh, yeah.
You know, every, every time you touch a piece of this, you know, there's a lot of words in there and a lot of them aren't defined well. And, you know, the scope and scale covers a lot of things. And so, you know, I do think, starting with this agenda and this list and maybe another round of working with that list about priorities would be a, a natural step for engagement between staff and, and these bodies. It sounds like we've got, you know, a variety of things, you know, um, the legal depth.
It sounds like we've got, you know, a variety of things, you know, the legal defensibility, a few of the already identified problem areas, Merck that you want to add to the list that may not already be on the list, and the use and definitions. That's, that's a pretty long list of things there that probably has some further refinement to do once those pieces are kind of fleshed out. And if that's what you're working toward, maybe that's a next touch point for us as a body to set a timeframe to convene with, with your thoughts on that list.
Yeah, and I think the missing piece here is throughput. And what is it that we, with the Berkeley group, can churn? Once you've decided from that list of things that you're set to move forward, how fast can we get that going and back to you for public engagement and everything else? Because there, there is a big risk of picking two things off the list of ten, trying to fix those, and then you go back to the next two things. But then you've got to touch the first two things because it's all interconnected. The more we can bundle, the, the better. But we have to have the capacity to, to process it in a meaningful, transparent way to the bodies and to the public.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up because as I was thinking about the Berkeley recommendations in light of the things that are already on the list, there's clearly interplay. But, you know, they touch each other, but they're not the same, you know? They, they cut across different things. So I do think having a single kind of thoughtful, unified list of these types of changes that you, with, you know, with, with staff come up with, and then we can work to help prioritize, that will be the basis for all those other steps in terms of timing, roles, you know, budgeting, whatever, sequencing. I mean, that feels right to me.
We're talking about things and kind of chasing the tail a little bit. I think what, what I want is I want a good ordinance. I want it to be updated. I want the changes made that we think that we need to have made and have a better uniform or piece of ordinance for us. Whatever sections that we need to touch to do that, I think we need to do it. And we know the process, and you and Art and Michelle, and you need to tell us the framework that you envision is most efficient, and we'll follow it. Y'all did the sign ordinance, you brought it to us, you know, we've been looking at that. And, you know, maybe we've taken that a little bit too far into analysis, but, but I think you know what we need. We have adopted.
We, we have an idea, but we're a reflection in a lot of ways. So, and we have limited capacity, and that's where the Berkeley group can help us.
Yeah, you know your capabilities, what you can do and what your time is, all three of y'all and every person. And y'all need to allocate this and give us a framework. You know, we don't want to make the county any easier to develop. We know what the people want in the county. They want less activities in agricultural areas, and we've got the designated areas where building or commercial. You know, we talk about these commercial uses in county that are potential. But in reality, there's such a small amount of commercial area, and most of it is in location that can't be used anyway. So that's all kind of takes care of itself. So it really kind of comes down, if anybody comes in here and buys a place in the country, they don't want anything happening next door. So I think you just need to tune this engine here and do what we need to do to it.
Yeah, I think we're, we're ready to, to do a lot of that and kind of hit steps so we don't get, you know, what I'm most fearful of is whether, you know, we think we have the best ideas and best plan forward is to travel too far down the road, that the correction back to what you and the public want is too hard. So I think we've got, it's got to be an iterative process with the bodies so that we, we traveling together rather than the staff coming up with a solution and presenting it and saying, here it is.
You're not going to get a comment to propose something.
And I a hundred percent agree with that. And, and if we're not pushing hard, it's not going to go hard.
When you push, you create dialogue. Something good's going to come out of that.
I'm sorry. I was just going to say, the other thing I think we have to keep in mind is that we do have very limited staff for enforcement. And so, I mean, to me, when I left the meeting with the Berkeley group the other week, I just think it's important that they get a full sensibility of the county and what our priorities are, and that we priority, we prioritize things that we can enforce. Because I know that the noise ordinance came up, and I don't think staff should be chasing decibels all over the county. I don't think that's a priority.
We agree.
I have the machine, though.
Yeah, we do.
So, I mean, if we have small staff, and I don't think most people in the county want a noise ordinance, and, you know, it's just like, one staff was getting calls a few years ago, oh, this property's only approved for four people to be on it on the daytime, and there's five people on it, and now come out and catch them quick. I mean, that's not the best use of our staff. And the other thing that came up was the dark skies and memorializing that in an ordinance. And I'm a huge fan of dark skies. I think it is a wonderful, wonderful feature in Rappahanna County, and I hope people appreciate it and will work toward it with a very good and charitable heart. I don't think memorializing in an ordinance and chasing lights all over Rappahanna County is a good use of our staff. And considering they're not camping out overnight, I'm not sure who would enforce it. Other people might feel differently. I think the list that the staff, that we've referred to the planning commission as the board of supervisors, as the working list, is still a good list of priorities for me.
Yeah, there's a lot there to work on.
On, on that vein, though, y'all need some sort of direction tonight. So would we look at segment use and definitions? If those are problem areas, then I, I would, I would think we would look at that.
Well, and I think the board's tasked, Art and I, and specifically in the meeting, Michelle does get off, you know, out of that task, but to go through the use table, that was at one of your recent meetings. So we're, we're working on that, and I think definitions and all that are, are linked, as we've discussed tonight. But that, that process and clarity, it all has to go together. So I, as I think we've talked through and Art mentioned, I think what would be best is for us to keep working on that. But then devise this kind of listing of all these other things that we think need to come together for process clarity and bring that back to the body so you can understand these pieces that aren't necessarily already referred. And then come to agreement on where the focus or if all those things are important or we should have prioritization, and then use that to set a schedule with Berkeley.
Could you prepare materials for us for the first of the year so that then we could get through it in the next two months to three months, and then start to work with Berkeley group in the spring?
I think that's realistic. I mean, as I understood, there were two major tasks for us.
I want to, I want Berkeley group tasks starting in July, if we can.
Yeah.
Next July.
Oh, January, sorry, January.
January, yeah.
Because they said they were busy in the fall. I want to get on their schedule. Sorry. Is it possible to come back to us next month with both bodies to present something like that? Probably, but we can.
But, but there was two big tasks that they gave us. One was the use table, the other, other was the reform of the special use program.
Right.
At BZA Avenue.
Which is kind of.
That's your matrix.
That's all together, right? Does that, does that matrix have a bunch of SEs, SUPs, and Ps, or are there fewer letters than that?
Can you start to bring this material in October that we can filter back to Berkeley group by January?
Yes, yes.
Do another joint session in October?
I think we each make our way forward.
Yep. That's a great idea. And it wouldn't necessarily be the completion of the task that we're doing, although we can get close on that. But that menu, I'm confident we can have that and probably some pieces of the other assignment.
I'm sure the pacing of the materials will be a challenge, and there will be different log fans along the way, regardless of how carefully we contemplate the work, but we need to get started.
And I would, this is all important to me. My most important goal is to bring new staff, get them ramped up and get them running so that I can more focus on this.
You'll have that done by October, too.
Yeah.
You don't need to sleep, do you?
No, no.
Find me a couple of things. First, I want to piggyback on what Ms. Smith said about, I think that, I'm fearful of the term best practices because that implies a benchmark that is based on a set of counties that aren't at all like us. So to me, whenever I hear that phrase, I get nervous.
Who's best practice? I think for, for process, that's very valuable.
Well, it's good to know what that is, but that's when these things sort of creep in. It's like, well, this is what everybody's, you know, all the leading counties are doing this. So I do think that, I really like to reinforce that point. The other point, more of a practical matter, for our purposes, you know, the planning commission has, has been discussed in several fora, is kind of working through the sign ordinance. We have had some discussion around the, the event emergency vehicle access. That is, you know, we, there wasn't a quick answer to that that we could devise. There were, I think, definition issues galore in, in some of those statements, you know, where were the, what were we talking about, the entire length of the ingress and egress? You know, a lot of what ifs about, you know, commercial, nonprofit. I mean, I think we were making progress, but, so my point in bringing these both up is that my intention, to the extent that I continue to be driving what the planning commission is doing in the near future, is to stay focused on those two things as our, as our top priorities unless, unless directed or requested otherwise.
Staff's ready to support wrapping up the sign ordinance so you can get that pushed to public hearing.
Yeah, great.
The other is a very small ordinance amendment that the court actively support, assist, whatever you need.
I, I think what I was saying is, the small, well, the, the small form of it is inadequate in our view. So if, if it's going to fly, I think it, in our assessment, is it needs to be bigger in some way because of the lack of definitions around what some of those key.
Yeah, we were, the board was worried about unintended consequences, which the, want the planning commission to.
And I think we imagined quite a few.
All right, so we're thinking, meeting in October, joint session to go over where you've gotten to that point?
Yeah, and I don't know if that'll be a board meeting, planning commission meeting, or neither, might be a different date from both. It depends on what the planning commission has on your agenda. If you have a heavy agenda, you know, you really can't take a couple hours to work on this at the same time. So we'll have to work, coordinate that.
We suggest that that be a special meeting?
Yeah, so the second week or something like that, or.
Or it could be the evening session for the board supervisors and the planning commission could join us.
Yeah, depending on if there are any plans. Public hearings roll in your way. So I think we'll just have to be fluid on figuring that timing out and then reaching out early as I can to check schedules. Yeah, we'll, we'll know pretty soon on public hearings that'll land in the boards October evening session. I don't think there are any board-initiated public hearings.
And just as we're discussing procedures and plans, again, we haven't fully adjusted to the current state that we're in, but my thoughts on this would be that I would like to see us scheduling regular work sessions, probably between, you know, at least one between our regular meetings so that we can zero in on some of these more focused.
The logistics of this meeting being a planning commission regular meeting really, really forced your hand to be here. But the library may make more sense to sit, to arrange yourselves, I don't know. You can let me know, but if this works, then it's fine with me. You just have your back to the public. You might have to at the library, too, so I don't know.
Nobody comes to the library. That's the only problem with the library. My personal feeling, except for Anita, who comes to all the meetings in this area.
Well, you know, this works, too. I was a little worried at how this was going to work out, but seems to have worked.
And schools get, get a lot more people in it. I don't know if more people show up at a school, but it's kind of barney, it's hard to hear.
You can go, and you can go to the band room. Still, it's buried in the back of the school, it's hard to find.
You want me to take that big until you have a public hearing?
True. And in the school there, it's wonderful that they have those additional air conditioning units and blowers, but they make a lot of noise and it's hard to hear. The band room has that issue, and the auditorium has that issue.
All right, so I think, I think we have a path forward on the land use policy evaluation. Both agendas did touch on, both also list the event vehicle, did, joint bodies want to talk about that now or defer? And sign ordinance is also listed as well as the whole list of items that have been referred, many of which are checked off as being done.
It sounds like the vehicle access to events, you've got more.
I, I think, and I'm not really prepared to delve in too much, but I, as I recall, there were two kind of challenges. One is, you know, the events, it seemed like this was intended to be focused on agritourism kind of commercial events, but that wasn't super clear. And there were some questions about, gee, if this is, you know, is this a, you know, a fox hunt? Does anything that has multiple vehicles get sort of wrapped up in this? And so the kind of, you know, categories of events seemed like it was something that was inadequate in the, without clarification, as I recall, I'm going from memory. And the other was, there were statements about ability for emergency vehicles to pass, and we were thinking about scenarios from different types of locations. Somewhere, you might have a single long driveway. And, you know, we were thinking about the Miller barn where that was a particular issue because there was kind of a circuitous driveway, and we wanted to look at particular passing lanes. But then it sort of broke down when you were talking about something that would be, you pull off the road into a field and it's sort of wide open. And, you know, it's a question of, of which is the hard surface? And there were some questions, I think, that were trying to get at this about surface that seemed like they were definitions that we weren't real clear on. So this is, I think, the, where the conversation landed during the one session that the planning commission spent maybe thirty minutes on this. So from that, I concluded that we were not in a position to simply return and say, yeah, we think you should go ahead and push, push this forward. And I guess the question there is, we hadn't reached a point of saying, well, do we want to try to add some of these definitions and make it longer? Or do we want to sort of report back in more of a, you know, memo, or, you know, now we're doing it verbally form about some of those challenges and get, get reactions? It's, it's never, you know, when, when you come to us with that specific of a markup, in my view, it's not quite clear. I mean, I take it as a request for us to consider it and do what we think is necessary. But in that case, I wasn't sure if you were really just looking for us to do a thumbs up or thumbs down and come back to you or, or what. So if you want to clarify that ask of us tonight, I would certainly help.
Answers, yes.
The answers, yes?
Yeah, yes.
To all of that?
Yes.
Well, you know, the big picture is, are all locations in the county acceptable to have events that attract many vehicles? Is that acceptable?
I think, before we actually go there, I think we really want to look at whether it's an open to the public event or a private event. If it's a private event such as a wedding or a Fraser family reunion, you're not going to see too many people happy about having an event of parking regulation.
Well, and, and does it, is it linked to a driveway or a private road that's shared or public road that's shared by multiple parties?
That should be considered.
And that, maybe that's an important distinction.
Well, is this all about public safety, about fire rescue? And that's what, whether it's a private event or if it's a theme, that should be taken out. If it's for fire safety and rescue, it doesn't matter.
And that, and that's the view that, that we held, that the threshold matter is that once you get a certain number of vehicles attending an event, you really need to have, be able to have access to that event with two-way traffic. Just in a big picture. Now. Now, does that extend down the, the driveway to the place? Or is it just to the driveway for public and private roads? I mean, there's some public roads that don't have two-way access.
Yeah, that's.
But those areas of the county might not be appropriate for an event that draws 100 cars, 20 cars, 10 cars, whatever the right number is. It may just be that those areas of the county just aren't appropriate for such an event. Because if something bad happens and law and fire need to get in, they're going to be trying to get in the same time everybody is streaming out.
What, what calls does it come up?
Yeah.
What, agritourism?
Agritourism is the key one. In many, in many special exceptions or special uses, the board or BZA can apply reasonable standards to a use to make that use compatible with the kind of underlying area. And one of those might have something to do with the road. Well, then agritourism never even comes to this body, either body.
So this, so I don't think we have issues with, with rescue squads and fire departments getting access to property. This is a way to control agritourism.
It's a way to provide for public health and safety, which are things that we are allowed to regulate for agritourism.
And one possible unintended consequence is the impact on Fraser family reception.
That is true.
Right. How about the fox hunt?
But, but if there's a fox hunt and four people get injured, or, or a tornado goes through, does that matter? I mean, is that important? Do you want, should fox hunt have two-way traffic into the site? I don't know.
You know, I just, I know that people get hurt and the fire rescue has gotten there and a lot of those roads are not two ways. And, you know, I just, I would be hesitant to make that requirement.
Yeah, I, I think the distinction here that somehow we need to get to is public safety versus private risk-taking and safety. And I, and I don't know if there's an avenue that we can draw a line in there.
Access to a parcel versus within a parcel, perhaps. I don't know.
Well, we had that.
Well, the planning commission addressed a model up there. Everything was kind of floating along and, you know, nobody had any thoughts. And then Richard Burke got up and said what would happen if a fire happened there. And that basically any car within 200 feet would melt. And I remember that night, everybody's eyes just changed. And the perception of what we needed to do then for that application changed. But in, in this situation here, you know, when we start talking about weddings and deans and family gatherings and fox hunts and all these kind of things that, you know, out here in the country that occur, I mean, we have a thing in our ordinance where you can have a woodstock every three years.
Right.
On your property with no permit, right?
Well, administratively.
Administratively, yeah. Walk in, you get in, walk out.
You have to have a couple porta potties or something.
They did that down Battle Mountain Road with that joint or Ironman thing here 10 years ago. It was a tremendous turnout and that was a narrow road.
Which, and, and for the record, they can't have a campground because it's a narrow road. So if you have these.
Well, it seems to me that we threw the number 10 in there because we had to have a placeholder. It seems to me that where the logic of your, your discussion is, is the scale. And that, remember, is the basis of your planning legitimacy, is the scale of things in these zones. So if you're concerned about public safety, the 100-car event versus the 10-car event, which one poses a greater public safety potential threat?
Is there a threshold?
Yeah. So that's where it seems to me that, that you can, I think legitimately come up with a number there that would solve these problems. How many 100-car, with the exception of Mr. Fraser family? How many, how, how many 100-car family reunions are we going to have in Rapid County? So, and, and that's where.
Well, we can't have it here. It's no place big enough.
That's right. We couldn't fit them all. So that, that's where I think that your mind should focus is, we got two goals. You gotta, you gotta, you want to promote agritourism, but you want to do so safely. Well, the areas you can legislate is the safety thing. Is there a nexus, a rational nexus between the number of vehicles and the likelihood of emergency services being needed? So we threw the number 10 in there. That's absolutely arbitrary, just because we needed a placeholder. But that's the decision, the policy decision that you all should.
There's two boards up there that are very vital. Number one, of course, which you just said are 10. And down in paragraph two, one, one, the all-weather road indicates that you're going to have to pass, two vehicles have to pass completely on all weather.
Right. So this has to work when it's been raining for three weeks and when it's been dry for three weeks.
But that exists to width of the road.
Yeah, that's right.
And that's a pretty wide road.
That could be, that could be a 10-foot paved road with wide shoulders. It could be all gravel. It's just not, it's not dirt with grass.
Well, and, and it's also, the other, I think we did talk about the number, and then we started thinking about that and saying, well, is that 10 throughout the course of the all-day event? Or is that 10 at any one time? Is that, you know, is that a, is that a, you know, if you have all 10 coming in once, you have obviously more concern than if they're all in there. And you, I mean, it sounds like the scenario of most concern is the exit, is the exit in the event of a problem.
And so there may be clarification. It's, the intent was the number that are there at, at any given time.
So, so for example, the following, when they, they have the art tour, you know, you've got all these paddles and all the killing. And they have 102 cars coming down there.
Through the day, yeah.
And they're very narrow.
Right. But the intent would be, how many are, the intent was how many are sitting there ready to flee when the bad thing happens?
Which goes to be worry up and get out here. There are 100 cars here, you know, enforceability issue a little bit. But, I mean, I think, I think these are all things that would, it's going to require more words. More words require kind of more time and discussion, but we can continue down this path. But I think we are kind of, I mean, if we go all the way to scale and hope that we get to a scale that excludes even the most productive family reunions, you know, maybe we can get somewhere. But then I'm not sure we, not sure if we get to a number that's high enough that we've really done anything for your purposes.
You're right, you're right. Yeah, so that is, at some point, it makes, it really renders it moot. But you have to decide whether, is this important for you to apply? If it's not practically ever going to come into effect, don't put it in the ordinance, right? But if you think that certain circumstances are just not safe and that the hunt or the Fourth of July fireworks or whatever should have two ways of getting in and out, then codify it. If you don't think that that's critical for public safety, which would apply to everything, including agritourism, you know, these are options for you, but you have very limited options for agritourism. And public safety is, is one of them. But if it's not equally applied across the county, you probably have a legal problem.
I'm sure you would.
Yeah. Which is, which is why this was the proposal to, we thought, be able to stand up to scrutiny of not being equally applied.
But has there actually been a problem?
You going to name these departmental ordinance?
I don't think there's been an instance where a law enforcement officer or first responder has been unable to make entry, yet.
It's a pulseograph test. Is it reasonably enforceable? That's the issue.
No, I know.
It's just like when we had the 2A thing a couple of years ago. Remember this courthouse where we said, hey, we, there's no way. It's 87 capacity. We had 800 people, or whatever it was. And so board decided at that point, we had to vamoose to the high school. Because you couldn't exclude anybody, but we just didn't have the facility. It wasn't safe. So again, if you're going to have some monster event, you know, like Cooter Fest or what have you, then you, you need to be able to make sure that, that you can get safety people in and out.
Well, and I think that the benefit of the Miller example is we had a very clear venue that we could imagine with numbers. If you just make it about numbers, and it could be any place that could attract numbers, the, the set of environments that you're talking about with respect to the ingress, the egress, the facilities, the, the hazards of the activity, you know, all those things, I think, play into this in a way that we just couldn't really narrow down enough to get comfortable with something, at least, at least in the discussion that's ensued so far.
And you hit on, it would guide decision-making for special exceptions going forward. And this was brought up in the Swinler, recent Swinler one, that a special exception would have to be considered with that ordinance in mind. Because if you're going to approve it and it's going to predictively bring in a certain number of people, then it's going to have to meet this, right?
But in this case of a special exception or special use, we could consider the venue in the requirements and the conditions of the permit.
Yeah.
And that's what we've typically done. I mean, that was, that was.
You could do it subjectively, one by one. You could put it into the special requirements. But for some uses, you don't have that opportunity.
I think that's the point, with, we don't have that option with the ones we were really concerned about, which is the agritourism.
Right. Like, you know, Mr. Carney has, and his family has a brewer, a farm brewery, or just whatever it is, winery, brewery.
Winery and brewery.
Yeah. And so his access road, is it wide enough for two cars to pass? I don't know the answer to that. But this would have, you know, implications on a use such as that. And should, should his road need to be a certain width? Well, I think you would have no say-so outside of doing some of this.
I think it's reasonable to think about this. For instance, think about Eagle's Nest. You could put a winery up there. You could bulldoze the top of it and you could have a huge event. And you'd be on Eagle's Nest, Bessie Bell Mountain. How would you enforce it? We've never had, we've never done any advertising for a single event we've ever done, except for put up some flyers and maybe put something on social media. We have a lot of people come. How would the county enforce that?
I mean.
Get a complaint and take a photograph and make sure.
But recently, it's kind of like the noise thing. It's like, it just, you gotta, you gotta be able to enforce something for it to have any teeth.
Well, why is it drone, okay?
We can lend you, we can lend you the drone.
GoPro and.
But I do think it's worth thinking about because agritourism is by right. I mean, you can't tell someone that they can't go up on top of a mountain. Here, we don't have any of those sort of qualifications or overlays where you can't bulldoze the top of something and have a really narrow road and have a ton of people up there. And people do it in lots of counties in Virginia. But, you know, I, I do think it's worth looking at. But I do think that we need to encourage other sources of revenue other than personal property and real estate tax. So, you know, it does benefit the county to have stuff like that in there. It's just, how would you enforce it?
I guess to me, the comment about this is, this would be a matter where it would be interesting to me to see what the Berkeley group is aware of or could find that other counties might have done on this. I, I, I don't know. I'm not sure if that's what started this or not. But, you know, this is, as we've been discussing, how we might use them. This seems like an example just to, to get it beyond our collective imagination.
We looked at what Madison and.
Couple of things.
Culpeper and Madison didn't have anything compared, didn't have anything quite like it.
You might want to look at Nelson because they are big on agritourism.
Alamo.
Alamo.
They've got some.
Do they have something like this in there?
They have more than I think than anybody else. They're, I think they're the best.
They're, they're a verbose crowd.
Large staff of planners.
This ordinance, this ordinance is in the planning commission's, proposed ordinance amendment is in the planning commission's lab. The board has referred it. Wants the planning commission to have these difficult conversations. It's good that you could be together to understand each other's perspectives right now. But I think the board needs something back, something. And if it's, we don't get it.
Time's ticking. Clock's ticking.
I just wonder, the different types of county governments, like county manager form or county executive form, are, are they treated any differently as to what type of regulations that they can come up with?
I don't think so.
It's handful.
We're, we're on a traditional, traditional county board here.
A couple of Northern Virginian and Wrighton, I mean, and Alamo. But I, I don't, I don't think, like, the agritourism sort of thing. I don't think they get a, get out a jail card for those.
Well, I, I mean, Alamo, they just seem to have so many layers of things down there. And I don't know, looking at their budget, they apparently have a much larger staff than we do.
I know they're new county attorney, so that's good. Better, better access there.
All right, should we go into draft sign ordinance?
You already talked about this. I guess Chairman Light just said that he intends to drive this sign ordinance forward. Staff's ready to assist. I think you had a, you had a work session set up and it just, it didn't work out because of a quorum issue. So I would encourage planning commission to come up with a, another work session. And I'll show up with my computer and we'll finish it.
Is there a draft form that you can share with the board?
Yes, it's right here on this agenda, I believe.
Because I'd asked for one sometime back and I've never received it.
And Mr. Curry, I don't think we've had a chance to this, to discuss, does, does this reflect your best interpretation of what we had.
I think it's up to date through that.
Through that work session.
It includes everything that you went through in that last work session. Yeah.
If I remember correctly, this doesn't include any reference to public art or definition of public art?
Well, it's kind of half and half right now. Because when they got through that first half of the ordinance, the planning commission made some decisions as far as what goes in the draft to adjust the definitions so that public art, there was not going to be a separate article or anything about public art. And it was basically just, if it happens, it happens and it's not a sign.
Right. Not commercial in nature.
Right. That was a change. Now, if you look at this draft, I think that new article's still sticking at the end because they hadn't gotten there yet to say delete it.
Yeah. The key is in the beginning, in the definitional triggers. And I think that's where we handled it, what our intent was to, to, to render that part of it moot, that we want to get into that.
So standing by, ready when you figure out a date to do that.
Indeed. I'm leaving for Maine tomorrow for four weeks. So it's not going to be in the next four weeks.
They, they have internet there. We can zoom in.
That's a possibility.
Not if it's a good vacation.
Four weeks doesn't get to be all vacation, believe me. So that's why I'm not quite in a position to put dates on the calendar tonight. But it, but actually, that's, thank you for bringing that up, is, is a virtual work session.
Well, you have to have a physical quorum assembled.
At the physical quorum, but I could participate virtually.
Okay. You're not going to be here.
Not for the next four weeks.
With chair to meeting.
Well, if you can do it electronically or with someone else, the body would have to select somebody.
So this is why I feel that it may be premature to try to schedule something. But we could at least put a, maybe look at a date that would be a target date.
Well, obviously, you'll just have to come back. It's been done before.
The, the last week of August could potentially work, 31st. Whether it's a Wednesday, I have a meeting on that Wednesday. Some day that week, it's a fifth week for a lot of the, there's not a lot of recurring things.
Well, and, and that is a time that I actually will be flying back for a work-related visit. So I don't know what, what that is. So there, it is possible that I could be back for it in person. So why don't we, why don't we follow up and see about the 31st, if that is a date that.
Well, I have a six o'clock meeting, so.
Yeah, I have to, fire levy.
But, but wait a minute, are we talking about, we're just talking about a planning commission work session.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
That's all right. You're welcome to come, please.
Well, if, if you want me to edit the sign ordinance while you're going, I need to be there.
Yeah, good point. Twenty-nine.
But Tuesday or Thursday, good word.
But not, so not earlier in the week. You're. But not, so not earlier in the week, you're.
Monday could work.
Yeah, I'm thinking maybe Monday. How, how would Monday?
29th?
29th. I think the first is more of a problem. Can we, can we tentatively target the 29th at, is the, I think the preference has been to start those a little earlier, 6:00 PM?
And then Michelle can work with you. Rather than continue this meeting because you're not sure, she can work on the call, which is a special five-day thing, I think, for the planning commission. So she'll make sure she gets straight with everybody over the next week or so, try to nail that down.
And I think we will have to, that will include trying to get some comfort that we will have a physical quorum.
Yep.
How many times you got to, this one?
It's, yeah, standard, it just has to be notified five days ahead of thing.
All right.
I don't know why they did that, for the planning commission, not the board, but state smart, you know?
There are reasons.
All right.
You good?
I'm good.
All right. Do we want to go over the direction for zoning ordinance?
I think it's worthwhile just to have it on screen real quick.
Looks like a lot of.
A lot, a lot of check marks, which is great. So sign ordinance, hanging out there, just talked about that. Professional office, that was a reference to highway corridor, which we talked about a little bit earlier. Lot of things allowed in the highway corridor through Sperry goal 211. Professional office is not one of them. And I think, why is that?
I, I think it was an anti-lawyer thing.
Maybe.
It's just not being enforced.
I agree with that, too.
You're going to lose when you get sued on that one.
And it probably was a reflection of the businesses in the corridor at the time.
That's right. And it was, you know, at one time in the eighties, it was a critical corridor for that marketing to the cars that are passing through, which isn't quite as critical these days because of 66 and everything. Public art, which you've just talked about, the cannery was the whole ag and processing took care of that. Family subdivisions, this was a, to look at whether that should be relaxed or changed at all to provide additional opportunities in that area. I think that is a topic that I've got on my list that would have to get pulled into the big picture.
That one section needs to be fixed, I think.
The, the, the difference between the two, it probably just needs to be deleted entirely from the zoning ordinance and just be in the subdivision.
Yeah, but I, I think the problem is, when it got amended, did it get amended in the zoning ordinance but not the subdivision?
Yeah, one place it got.
But, I mean, and that's the one I pushed for, but I didn't realize it don't, it, it got messed up like that.
Right, and, and it's like this discussion that's happened recently about the subdivisions on a non-primary road, that's in both ordinance as well. Why? You've got events, this whole continuum of events, another item that we've talked about a lot and that I've talked about with Berkeley group that will be something that we will want to be looking at, from field parties to conference centers and everything in between. And vehicle access to events is what you just talked about. So a lot of these things are within the conversations you just had. And many thankful that Michelle's kept the items on there with the check marks to help you remember that we have made progress. And the main amendments aren't even on here and those are done, so that's good.
Yeah, they're at the top.
That's it.
I don't know why they got called many amendments when it took six years to do them.
Because we made it.
We just went through that. We just went through May, we're almost on time.
We just said which May.
Yeah, exactly.
All right. You good?
We're good.
I'm glad everybody could get together. Thank you for the joint, joining us for the joint session.
So, I guess, board, you can adjourn and then the planning commission can adjourn?
Uh, should be.
If you're still on the line.
Yep. All right.
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
One second. You have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. And opposed, no.
I'd love to make a motion, but can we make a motion adjourned?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Nice job, everybody.